All right, we're just waiting for Betsy. And for those of you on the line, I'm going to put the Way Out Shelter Agreement at the top of the agenda, just to get that out of the way, the shortest one.
Hey, Brian.
Hey, Brian.
Yeah.
Sorry, there's an echo. Do you want Candace to...
Study session to order for Spokane City Council for October 28th. And we have our agenda, the substantive things on the agenda are the agreement between the city, county, and Salvation Army on the bridge housing, an update on the north-south corridor, and 2021 comp plan amendments. And I don't know if we're going to have time to talk budget and ARP, but that is always on our study session agenda. Several of us have a 12:30 hard stop health board meeting, so we have to finish by 12:30. But with that said, I'm not sure who from the administration is taking the lead on the... Okay, Eric, you're up.
Right, so I'll start and then hand off to Erin Smith, who's joining today. And it's been kind of the regional connection point in terms of, you know, the Way Out Shelter before the county and the city. I think, as I think has been briefed in the past, in terms of the, you know, the dollar allocation support which you gave previously, which is appreciated, is just trying to make sure that we memorialize, you know, the agreement, you know, between the entities to make sure that the maintenance and operations piece, you know, can move forward. And, you know, we've been looking at this from both kind of the staffing perspective and making sure that we, between the staff and the providers, you know, inclusive of Salvation Army, we're all kind of on the same sheet of music as it relates to, you know, getting the job done. The interesting artifact for this, at least for me, and I certainly don't pretend to be a subject matter expert, as you know, but I think this introduces a very, I think, new and good chapter for transitional housing support in our region that has really been kind of a little bit of a missing link. And, you know, I think that helps, you know, I think that helps the overall system as we continue to try to look at the new and creative ways, you know, that we balance these populations, you know, for their benefit, you know, in our region. So I'll just do that as the intro. And then Erin, you know, if you could, you know, just kind of give that summary on the details that would be beneficial for the council to know, I would appreciate it.
Wonderful, great introduction, Eric, and nice to see all the council members this morning. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to go over a few of the highlights that are contained within the MNO agreement, and then just leave it open for any additional questions that you might have related to the partners that are contributing into this effort, or obviously for Eric, for city contributions. This particular maintenance and operations contract is a performance-based model using an annual operating budget from TSA. There will be monthly invoicing, but that monthly invoicing will also be accompanied by outcome metrics from TSA to the city in order to trigger the payment. So that is the shift that Eric was talking about. It will be one of the first times we're doing this, and is really an exciting way of incorporating our outcomes based on the 2019 strategic plan from the COC into our actual allocations. In addition to monthly reporting, TSA will also be submitting quarterly and annual reports for budgets to actuals prior to the next year's budget that would then go into the next cycle for the five years of funding. Data elements will be required for entry into the CMIS/HMIS system, and this is separate from the monthly reports for the outcome metrics. And once again, this is just to ensure alignment with what was adopted by the COC strategic plan that went before Spokane City Council, the commissioners, and the city of Spokane Valley. Coordinated entry for individuals interested and eligible for this facility will be utilized. It will be utilized in conjunction with provider referrals from other shelters, as well as street outreach. This is the first of its kind in our region, and a blended approach for the referrals that utilizes all three of those intake elements seem to be what is the best fit. And of the conversations I've been a part of that have included COC leadership, there is support of that. Lot more conversation to come, but I did want to assure you that coordinated entry will be a part of the referral construct. This particular center, the Way Out Center, will have two operating components. One is a continuous stay shelter, and the other is supportive housing prior to receiving a housing voucher or an actual brick-and-mortar apartment. This is actually reflected in the floor plan of the Way Out Shelter itself, where, and I'm happy to share this, or you can take a tour of this, where the continuous stay shelter portion looks more like a traditional shelter, but the supportive housing actually looks, I would say, more like, if you've seen the mental health facility, the half walls for which someone has their own space, and just continues the life readiness assistance to live on their own, have their space prior to moving out of the Way Out Shelter. Both of these service components will include contractually onsite wraparound services and programming, as well as transportation if needed for individual staying that include, but aren't limited to behavioral and mental health assistance, substance use disorder and drug treatment, help with identification documents, pre-employment, job readiness, and other items. There's actually, once again, in the floor plan, dedicated space for these meeting rooms, a computer lab, things like you would find at the Envision Center or WorkSource, but in kind of a mini setting at the Way Out Center. The lower level is dedicated for the foreseeable future to onsite isolation and quarantine capacity in accordance with what has been recommended from the Spokane Regional Health District for communicable diseases, 91 of them, I'm learning, that includes, but aren't limited to COVID-19. So those are really the highlights of the maintenance and operation contract. Happy to entertain any questions, or they may be more appropriate for Eric.
Councilmember, can you?
Thank you. I think I have to move my hand for you to see it. Thanks, Erin. And this may be a question for Eric. Can you elaborate a little bit on the day space? Is that low barrier?
So there is no day space, and I think...
You said day shelter, I want to know what that is.
Oh, continuous stay. Sorry, my confidence cut out. Continuous stay.
So can you describe that a little bit, please?
Sure. So once again, I'm learning, but this would not be what you considered an emergency shelter where someone comes in. It's actually referral-based. So someone who has maybe been staying in another night-by-night shelter that says, "I'm ready to get my life in order, and I would like some help doing that," that actually, once again, through coordinated entry, direct referral, or street outreach, then can come and be a patron of this Phase II or continuous stay aspect of the Way Out Center, which is, once again, you can think of it as a reserved bed, but it does have some expectations about getting your life in order, that people will want to get their identification, that they'll want to understand what parts of their life are needing a little help to get a job and move forward. So that is how it differs from an emergency night-by-night shelter. It's the person saying, "I'm ready to start preparing myself for the next step in leaving homelessness."
So follow-up, if I might. What, so people can come and go, then, from this extended stay shelter? And then what, you mentioned expectations. If they don't meet those expectations, are they asked to leave? What's the...how does that work?
No, that's great. I'm not sure where chat is, but I will spell out continuous stay. That's the actual term. But so what I understand from TSA is it is not a hard boot out the door. They understand that when you're trying to get your life together, sometimes you scrape your knee a little bit. And so there's a lot of hands-on undergirding. If somebody kind of has a trip up one day, TSA is there to get them back on to where they needed to be. Once again, though, if someone is really kind of changed their mind and doesn't want to be on the path towards leaving homelessness, TSA will, I think, work with them in saying, "Maybe the best place for you is to go back to an emergency night-by-night shelter," but there isn't, you know, a cold door type of a thing. So it is really, I think, continuing what has started, you know, when TSA was operating as a COVID emergency shelter, they actually were masquerading in some ways where a lot of the folks in that patrons were actually in a continuous stay phase of life, but staying in an emergency shelter, from what I understand from TSA, this allows them to actually do what they want in full form. But once again, that is why the collaboration among the shelter providers is so important, because if somebody thought they're ready and they're just not ready, then absolutely we'll make sure that there's a spot for them at another emergency night-by-night shelter if that's the best fit for them at this stage.
Can I ask one more follow-up, if I might? What's the plan for ensuring that the facility, the outside of the facility is secure, and we don't have the situation that we have at House of Charity where's the second ring of people that are preying upon the folks inside? How do we, how are you going to handle that?
I will share to my level of involvement, but if it gets beyond what I can answer confidently, I'll definitely do a follow-up with Salvation Army. So that is something that they are very aware of, and they want to ensure that not only for their patrons, but for those in the immediate, you know, several block area of that Way Out Center site, that we don't have inadvertent negative impacts. So from what I understand, they will not only continue, but actually enhance the security that they had in place when they were operating as an emergency shelter. And Major will know more than I do as what the enhanced security will be. They also do, in fact, they're doing that right now, even though the building is closed. They go out about three or four times a day when they're notified by the neighbors if somebody's loitering there, and ask them to move along. And so I think that those protocols, if somebody is not a part of their patrons, or really isn't being a positive impact to the public areas around the building, TSA is just going to continue to be cognizant that that's really not a congregating place, and be able to enforce that with their security, or if need be, a call for law enforcement assistance.
Councilmember Cathcart, and then councilmember Stratt.
Yeah, so first question, are, is, I know the county commissioners will vote on this, but does city council have a vote on this operating agreement at all? We do?
Yeah.
Okay. So I've got a few things here. So first of all, I mean, the bridge housing, obviously, component of all this is great, and it's important, and I fully support it. But I continue to be very frustrated by what we're calling good neighbor relationship protocols, which is not, I don't think by any stretch of any imagination, a good neighbor agreement. And I do have some really strong concerns with what's in it and what's not in it. So I'll just point out a few things here. So first of all, 4222, it says, "The members of the community agree." And then it later says, "The community further acknowledges." And I'm wondering, who is this community that we're referring to, and when did they agree? When did they acknowledge these things? What were those meetings like? Who was involved? I just, I don't, there's been no information about that, and I don't know how you can say that the community is agreeing to anything without some sort of buy-in from the community. So that's the first thing. The next, it talks about, "The grantee will provide the names of key staff," or it's going to provide an online form or an option to call a receptionist. And so there could be impacts 24 hours a day. Are all of these, or any of these people going to be accessible 24 hours? Will they respond immediately? Are they on the phone immediately? Is this going to be a situation where you leave a voicemail and you hear back in a day or two or three? I think there just needs to be more specifics, more teeth. Further, it still creates the carve-out for a quote-unquote foreseeable future alternative option. And then it also says that the surrounding property owners within 1,000 feet will be notified with only 48 hours. I think 48 hours is just, is ridiculously small amount of time. And further, there's no public engagement process if there is going to be a change of use, which I think there needs to be. And then on that 1,000 feet, that would include the Logan neighborhood as well, and there's not a single reference to the Logan neighborhood in this entire document. And I think that they need to be brought into this, in addition to Emerson Garfield, and they still have not brought it into this document. They've not had an opportunity to really have all the details and to weigh in, and I think that that would be important as well. And so I think, and what's really not here is a commitment by the city to provide security and some additional law enforcement support if there are impacts that are drawn to the neighborhood, as have been. And again, I don't think it's going to be substantial if it's bridge housing, but there still will be some impacts. But I think there needs to be something that commits the city to providing that security to make sure that the neighbors, the businesses, the people in that community feel safe. And so I just, I still continue to believe that this is, that as a good neighbor protocol agreement, whatever, it's deficient, it's not a good neighbor agreement, and I still would prefer to simply take out the good neighbor agreement from this so that we can work on a larger overarching policy and not let this be the precedent that's set as a good neighbor agreement. I just don't think this does it, and I think it needs a lot more, a lot more work. And I would rather us just simply say that this site is going to be used for isolation or bridge housing, and that's it, and then take out the good neighbor protocols, and we can work on a larger policy that's more thoughtful and put something together that way. So anyway, I don't mean to be overly negative, I just am very concerned about that piece of this. Again, fully support the bridge housing concept, 100%. I just think there's a better way to go about the good neighbor aspect of this. So I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember, oh, go ahead, Erin, and then councilmember.
I just wanted to say, I've actually had conversations with TSA and the county about that, councilmember Cathcart, and I actually appreciate you bringing that up. It really is the pleasure of council at large, but I think there is kind of some agreement on that, that good neighbor protocols, agreement, relationships, wherever you want to go with that, is really maybe an overarching concept that we might want to look at separately. So I believe, even as of this morning in speaking with Scott Simmons, that that, there would be support of that in just having this be a contract for the Way Out Shelter Bridge Housing, and, you know, if we need to specify isolation and quarantine, but there's actually no funding in this for isolation and quarantine outside what they need to provide for their patrons. So I think that if that's the pleasure of council as a whole, there'll be support among the other stakeholders to look at this more holistically, because there are lots of other shelters that we would want to accommodate for how relationships move forward. Thank you for letting me speak, council president.
Yeah, councilmember Stratt.
Yeah, so my one concern is, well, I had some concerns, but this was probably my major one, the one where it says that should they decide to switch services or add-on services, it's a 48-hour notice. And my concern is, and then what? I mean, is there any kind of interaction with the neighborhood or a gathering where they can talk with the neighborhood? So I do have some concerns about that neighborhood touch and making sure that those, because the neighborhood wants to be involved. They support the bridge housing. They just don't want to see happen what happened the last year when it was, when it was a shelter space. The other thing I would say is, and I may be, if somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, if we want to get this money out to the Salvation Army to start, you know, so they would have their money, it would seem to me that we could take out the good neighbor agreement references in the contract. We could look at the contract and say, "This is for Way Out Shelter, this is for bridge housing, and for..." What is it?
Continuous stay.
Continuous stay, and it would also be for, that's what I, what's the other use of it?
The supportive... Oh, yeah, the two things up top are continuous stay and supportive housing or pre-housing on the first level.
And then on the bottom level is the...
The patron isolation and quarantine. So to make sure that they don't have to go anywhere else, yes, correct.
Perfect. If we could narrow it to that, we've got the money, this is going to be used for these two purposes, it's not going to be an overnight shelter, emergency shelter, then that would give us time to work on a greater agreement, because I've now got Emerson Garfield businesses that are interested in working with some of the landlords and nonprofits for a good neighbor agreement. It might be just a really good opportunity to get some good heads together to get a template going for a good neighbor agreement that everybody, that we could use throughout the community. So that's just my input. But my, the 48 hours is the one that concerns me. If they change their mind, or they're going to add a service in the neighborhood, we felt getting the calls. What is the connection between the Salvation Army and the neighborhood going to be to discuss those changes?
I think there is a lot of support in that, and I think TSA and the county, we're just trying to figure out how do we, you know, amalgamate all of this. And I think they would feel a lot more freedom and confidence in this arrangement as well, so that it's very clear that this funding is for and only for bridge funding allocations and isolation and quarantine, and there, that's where it ends. Really nice, solid bookends. And I think really will help engage other providers for, you know, the new upcoming young adult shelter that's happening, I think, in the Logan neighborhood, and, you know, how we're unveiling, you know, what's going on in other shelters that the city's a part of, that I think could really promote some great synergy.
And I want to make it really clear that we're not trying to hold up...
No, no.
...by this.
Yeah.
We're trying, the last council meeting, to make it to where we could get that piece out. So we're not trying to hold up funding, we're just trying to make sure that piece is adequate for the neighborhoods.
Eric Finch had his hand raised up, and then after that, I'll call in councilmember Ramon.
Yeah, so all I was going to add, because I think this is, it's an important part of this conversation, I think some of this information or that dialogue has happened simply because we wanted to make sure that those things were addressed, you know, for the community feedback that's been received. So I think it was, you know, that's, I think that when we were first going forward, I think with this documentation, if we hadn't acknowledged some of those good neighbor things that we're looking at, then there was a fear that that maybe had been forgotten. So I think elevating it to that separate conversation would be awesome.
Councilmember Ramon.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that both the county and the city have outlined a community engagement process for siting essential public facilities, and that lies in our comprehensive plan. Actually, the state has had to go through this on some services that they provide for locations throughout the community. It might be helpful to follow that template. And also, I met with the chair of the Emerson Garfields neighborhood yesterday, and he is inviting you or us other staff to please come present on November 10th at 6 o'clock at the Corbin Senior Center.
Is that for the way, I'm not, who is that for?
Well, whoever would like to go, but they'd like to have a response on what this agreement is starting to look like and have a discussion directly with the neighbors.
Okay. I'll relay that to TSA if they're not aware.
So other, I have a couple of comments on this, but checking any other council comments, questions? Yeah, so I just wanted to say a couple of things. I, the thing about taking it out of the agreement is, you still probably need language that says, "If we don't reach a good neighbor agreement, that future funding is conditional on that," because that's the one reason why we're putting this language in this operational agreement, is that's the leverage. Once we sign the agreement agreeing on the funding, there's no real leverage. So I just kind of wanted to put that down. I don't know, you know, the county's not going to approve it by the first, so I don't know exactly. We'll find out from staff when they actually need the $83,000 for this quarter. Or we could say, "Hey, we'll fund this quarter, but the other years, we want to condition it on an agreement." Second thing, what was missing to me was, I really wanted to see an agreement by TSA to go to the neighborhood council meeting on a regular rhythm, might be twice a quarter. I just, I feel like, so the complaint-based system is good, I like that, but there's just that sense of, if there's an opportunity, when someone shows up live, I know as a council member, when I go to a neighborhood council meeting, there's people there, and, you know, they're not necessarily going to email me or call me on their own, but when they see me at the meeting, they bring things up, or they get information. And so I would like to see some regular rhythm of showing up at the meetings. And I hadn't thought about the Logan neighborhood, but that makes sense, and maybe just alternate those. I don't think it has to be every month, but at least once a quarter, maybe twice a quarter. And I thought some of councilmember Cathcart's concerns about things being a little more specific would be good. Just to, again, I think the time to address that is now, not that there's a right way to do it, but you want to get it figured out, because once it's, once we've signed off on the contract and the funding, it's more challenging to get it. So I just don't think this is quite ready, but we're getting closer, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into getting this operating agreement to this draft, getting pretty close. That was my comment. But other comments, Erin.
Now, I just want to make sure, shall I communicate to TSA and the county that the city council is considering pulling out the kind of detailed good neighbor aspects to a separate document, or do you guys want some time to consider that further? I just, I just wanted to make sure I relayed your preference.
Well, I don't, I don't know that we have a unified preference. I think, what I would say is unified is that the current language doesn't seem to satisfy people's concerns. And so I think we should continue to work on the language. Whether it stays in the agreement or doesn't stay in the agreement, I don't, I don't, I don't know that. I mean, we've, you've heard some opinions from people, but they were just individual opinions. So I don't know if you can convey the will of council. I think, I think the majority of council would like to see more specificity in whatever, whether it's in the operating agreement or separate. But I'll just speak for myself, is that if it's going to be separate, then we need to have language in the operating agreement that provides some leverage through funding, that if we don't get it done by a certain time, then the funding's not there. That's just my thing. And I don't know if they're going to be excited about that on the TSA. My hope is that we'll just get the language figured out. That's just me. That's just me.
We do reference a number of other strategic guidelines, you know, Health District is one of them, the CLC Strategic Plan. So I do think that it might be appropriate and TSA would be amenable to when a regional Good Neighbor Relationship Protocol has been adopted, that all the parties of the agreement shall be notified for adherence in this document. I mean, I think that's a nice placeholder because this is in construct. And I could kind of test the waters on that if that's the preference, since we've got a lot of other folks to chat with.
Councilmember, can you?
I have just one more question. You mentioned isolation. And I know in the past that we've had outbreaks of hep A in the homeless population. You mentioned COVID. But is isolation, how, how are they managing to make sure that it is in fact isolated so that people on the, or the top floor are not impacted? And what other diseases are we looking at to be isolated for?
I have to say, this is probably one of the silver linings to the COVID cloud, is it is actually, I think, fast-tracks some need for a while, to your point, whether it be hep, norvo, flu, these are things that shelters have really struggled with. And that is now the greater meaning of isolation and quarantine. So that if you do have a flu outbreak, a hep, a norvo, you have the space to keep those folks separated. And so to your point, specifically for mission, because every floor plan is different, the basement level actually has separate access, outdoor access, as well as restrooms and shower facilities. So that the folks that, whether it be a number of different communicable diseases and how they're transmitted, could be safely spaced in such a way that you minimize the transactions between others in the population. So we're really trying to look at it holistically. So whether you've got COVID-positive people or folks that are dealing with norvo, which are two totally different kinds of communicable methods, that you're able to flex your IQ in order to meet that.
Well, just to follow up, we know that if you're sharing HVAC system that is not efficient or doesn't have proper filters on it, that that is another way that disease can be spread throughout a facility. So just want us to be aware of that.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any other feedback, questions? All right. Really appreciate everyone bringing us to this. As you heard, everyone's super excited about this new innovative project that we've all been working on for a while. So it's getting pretty darn close, so we'll continue the conversation. That is going to bring us to a discussion on the north-south corridor. And I have Shawna listed as the resource person, but I see there's plenty of people on the line who, including Administrator Mike Gribner from Washdod and some other people. So Shawna, maybe you could T us up.
Perfect. Thank you, Council President. Is my sound working? Okay. It's not coming.
It's a little soft, but we can hear you.
Okay. So today with us, we have from Washdod, the project team working on the North Spokane corridor. So we have Shar Kay for the Eastern Region Office, as well as Bob Hillme and Mike Gribner. Bob is working on the design and really the project lead for, along with Shar, with the placemaking efforts that are happening. And I believe you all are quite familiar with Mr. Gribner's work. And so they're here today to update council on some evolving design options and really the status of the project. And with that, I will turn it over to them. They have a little presentation for you. Thank you.
Okay, so now it's my turn for a mic test. Everybody hearing me okay? So I'm going to attempt to share a screen and get a presentation underway. So as Shawna introduced me, I'm Bob Hillmes, project engineer, primarily focused on the North Spokane corridor. And so I'm going to provide an update today and we'll move through this. Some of this information I'll go through fairly quickly because I really want to focus or budget our time on the discussion about the I-90 connection. So our current status, this is essentially the north end, it's been open since 2012, way around abouts at the lower end, and focusing on work south of there now as we move from north to south direction. So connecting Washington 2015 provided funding for the connection all the way to I-90. It wasn't a full buildup of the connection. Recent history, we had some concerns with the second rail realignment. Really, the project that was the hurdle that we had to get out of the way to be able to really get into full construction mode. That project was completed this last August, so north of the river, moving the rail to make room for the freeway. And after that, we actually overlapped a little bit with that project, but everything north of the river is active and under construction. So essentially, from Carlisle north is underway. And currently, there's three projects active. When the rail project was delayed a bit, we actually stepped across the river and started a section across SCC's campus. We call that Phase One. So those three are under construction. So now the focus, really what we wanted to talk about mostly today is connection to I-90. The NSC has to connect I-90, and through a process, we go through a federal process because of interstate as federal oversight. And we do what we call an interchange justification report. This has actually changed to a different acronym now, but same theory. So to pass muster, we have to prove that the connection would allow I-90 to function at or better than what it does today for operational and safety. Those are the primary points, but there's actually eight different policy points that we had to go through through the IJR process. And so we've completed the IJR in 2017. That was a three-year effort to get through all the policy points, the public engagement, the staffing of the multi-agency group, shareholders, et cetera, and be able to move that forward. And we're continuing to work towards a practical solutions approach. That version actually provided a lesser impact I-90 design than what the original collector-distributor that was included in the IAS. And we're not to a point where modeling has been completed where we can resume public discussion on some considerations through practical solution blends. And right now, there's two leading options. And I just want to reaffirm, nothing has been finalized as far as decisions. We're providing the information the modeling has provided, and we're now ready to reengage the public. So I've mentioned the 2017 IJR. August of 2017, the layout essentially would start at the Hamilton interchange and extend all the way to Sprague Opole interchange with a series of braided ramps. This configuration actually requires 17 bridges to complete the connections necessary. But it did provide connections predominantly where you can connect today, those connections would either be there or replicated somewhere else within the corridor. So shortly after we approved that and got through the approval process, what we saw was traffic volumes were increasing faster than what we predicted. So that 2017 study actually used 2015 traffic counts projected into the future of the 2040 design year. And we were already seeing traffic volumes in 2020 that were higher than what we were expecting to see that soon in the process. And we also had a concern with Division Street on. So right now on I-90, to get on to I-90 from Division Street, there's a two-lane on-ramp. We call that an up weave. And then shortly to the east is the off-ramp to Hamilton. In the IJR design, one of those lanes would actually extend and go to the northbound NSC and one would stay to Hamilton. And there was a concern that that up weave and down weave movement would cause friction and cause more issues than what we're essentially determined during the IJR model. So we wanted to look at that a little closer. Last thing we want to do is come up with a design that might not work as well as we need.
We'll talk.
And so we looked at that, and then we looked at the IJR version, actually with those 17 bridges and braided ramps, pretty much locks the standard that configuration. So a future expansion of I-90 couldn't be easily done. It would actually take a complete reconstruction of that footprint, wherever that work would be, you know, from Hamilton all the way out to Sprague Opole. So what steps did we take once those concerns were raised? First, we had a consultant onboarded to look at some of the ramp metering modeling. So we had that same consultant do an independent evaluation of the projected traffic. And they were seeing things that, you know, kind of confirmed what our actual counts were. So we essentially went back out and counted 50 different intersections and updated the traffic demand and then pushed that through the model to get better projections. We reassembled the stakeholder team, which has included city, county, City of Spokane Valley, STA, SRTC. And so we pushed that through, and again, FHWA is a part of that as well. Through that, we essentially hit the reset button on the methods and assumptions as we move forward. And then we let the folks know that, hey, we're looking at doing something different. And so one of the options I'm going to share with you is going to be fairly dramatic for certain users. And so we want to make sure we're transparent with the public and they knew we were looking at things. And we staffed a multi-agency modeling task group to help guide that modeling effort. And that's been going on for close to two years now. So we onboarded HDR to kind of help us out with the modeling effort. And we've, to date, in that two-year period, we've looked at 25 different variations of solutions that could be approached to address those concerns. So the options we considered, this is a really short list, was to disconnect southbound Hamilton to eastbound I-90. So today, when you're heading southbound Hamilton, you actually cut off the bridge and you're around the corner and on to I-90. Our desire was to actually move the off-ramp from Hamilton split, where I mentioned the two lanes going to Hamilton, and move that around what we call the S-curves to exit onto a ramp to the NSC at that location. And that's about where Hamilton comes on today. So to be able to do that, we had to disconnect that. But when you do that, you're actually routing traffic that was on Hamilton on the Third Avenue, down through Altamont and Third Intersection, and then past Altamont, they could get on to I-90. So with that, we had to look at what intersection control would function well at the Altamont and Third. So a lot of pressure being put on to that facility with this connection. And then East Craig Business Association actually put some requests into us, and so we looked at some considerations for that. There was a desire for a connection from that area to northbound. We looked at three different versions, on-ramp from Second Avenue. Modeling demand showed it would definitely be used. And so we looked at how do we make that work? And wanted to make sure when we went through this modeling effort, we wanted to consider things that could possibly be added. And then with two practical solutions, we looked at a smaller footprint. We call this the simple trumpet. So the connection to I-90 kind of makes the big sweeping curves, kind of forms the end of a trumpet. And that one actually didn't pan out as well as we expected. And so we came up with a trumpet hybrid, where we actually employ the smaller footprint, but the IJR version in one of the quadrants. So this is the first thing we went public with, was the disconnect of Hamilton. Right now, it comes on, you're probably not going to be able to see this with detail. But I did send a PDF of this presentation to Shawna, and I think she shared that with council members now. So when you open that up, you'll be able to zoom in and get some pretty good detail off of these PDFs. So we went public with this, and so the disconnect of Hamilton was actually what we called alternate number eight. And so IJR, the one that was approved in 2017, only change was actually the Hamilton disconnect I-90 and the reroute down through there. Pretty simple on the surface, but highly impactful for those folks that commute further east and use Hamilton to get on to I-90. So we worked this through the modeling effort to the point where we could look and see how I-90 would operate. This is what we call a heat map. The colors indicate the speed of free-flow traffic. So without building the NSC and a connection, this is what I-90 would look like in the westbound direction, so approaching from the valley and coming, you know, past Broadway, Sprague, about to Havana. What this shows is folks are wanting to get to Dorfrea to either go north or south. And with a no build, the black indicates 10 to 20 mile an hour average speed. So that's stop-and-go traffic. The red is 20 to 40, that's really almost stop-and-go traffic, and you can see how that looks. With the modeling of the same area implementing the NSC connection and the alt-eight version with Hamilton being disconnected, this is what it would look like in the westbound direction in the morning in the design year 2014. So we have some areas where we have some slowdowns down into the 40 to 50 mile range, but nothing significant. So we'll do the same thing with the other modeling effort. We haven't completed yet, but this is the one that we have completed. So this is the afternoon or evening peak, heading in the opposite direction. So if anybody's driven I-90 in the afternoon, heading to the valley, what do you see? You see your red lights? And that's in today's world. Imagine 2040 traffic demands, it's going to be a standstill. And so this goes off the chart, past Division here. What we find today, when this friction goes up, this goes almost five miles, 4.7 miles back up I-90. And so with the build, we're actually seeing I-90 operate better. I know it sounds kind of unique that we could add a connection, but actually make I-90 operate better for throughput. So essentially, we have proved out that...
Councilmember Kafcard has a question for you, Bob.
Okay, yeah.
I just, just for some clarity around the alternative eight. So just so I understand it, so the idea is if you're southbound Hamilton, wanting to access I-90, you would, under alt-eights, you, westbound would still be about the same as it is now, but eastbound would travel, you would basically travel a much further distance down past Altamont to get on? Is that correct? And then at that point, would you choose between I-90 or the NSC? Is that how that would work?
No, that would be strictly I-90. So the NSC, if you're going from I-90, you would, you would actually exit onto an NSC-only ramp. But the Hamilton traffic you just described would go to Third Avenue, and then the next available on-ramp is at Altamont.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
Yeah. So it's not going to take you from Hamilton to 90, it's literally going to take you from Hamilton to Third and then Third to 90. Is that...
Correct.
Okay.
So no added direction travel, it's just the next connection is at Altamont.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
So we look at this option and try to identify the trade-offs. You know, there's always trade-offs with different designs, certain things work better, certain things do not. And so with this one, the trade-offs are that, you know, you're routing traffic down through Third and Altamont from Hamilton before you get on I-90. Could be seen as a negative, and it's definitely different than what it would be today. And what this does avoids the increased weave-induced congestion that I described going from Division to Hamilton with the IJR version. It does consolidate a ramp from westbound Second Avenue to the Freya. So currently, there's an off-ramp from I-90 to Second that is in conflict with the on-connections from the NSC southbound. And so we had to push that back to the west. And it's in just about Dorfrea area anyway, and so we've looked at, does it really make sense to have a second connection there? And so what we pushed through the modeling effort is to consolidate that movement with the current off-ramp to Freya. So they would get off of Freya to continue west on Second. And then, as I mentioned... And then, as I mentioned previously, it definitely constrains how we could be forward compatible with an expansion of I-90, should that be a consideration. So in the packet with the, I've got a pro con discussion, and I know we don't have time to go through this, I'm going to request maybe a sample homework. If you would look at this layout of what the alt-eight is and provide from your perspective what you see as a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, and maybe route that back through Shauna and us, we'd appreciate it. We've done this on our level, but we get it from different perspectives. If you look in the traffic engineer, they look at something. If you look at from a homeowner that, you know, used to have access and now doesn't, or now additional traffic routed through an intersection they routinely use, again, we're going to look for that input.
Councilmember Burke has a question.
Yes.
Um, okay. So I just have a clarifying thing. My brain's not fully grasping this. So if, so right now, the options, if you live where I live and you drive to get on I-90 are to go down Market and get on at that Altamont location, or go down one stop further west, no, sorry, east, or to go down Hamilton and get on there. So my question is, with the north-south corridor, there's going to be an on-ramp at Wellesley, right?
Yeah. Wellesley will have all four directions.
Okay.
Connections.
So you could potentially get onto Wellesley and go down to get on I-90, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And you get a direct connect to I-90.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was grasping that correctly. Okay, thanks.
And so I mentioned that simple trumpet, you aren't going to be able to see detail with this, but it essentially has a smaller footprint, which I'll show in the next, but it didn't. It takes the IJR version, the braided ramp version, and works in this quadrant. Also, the simple trumpet, what we found is we needed to provide a, what we call an add drop lane. So I-90 had to be expanded from the existing Hamilton on to the NSC off. And from the valley, you would extend the fourth lane that's already there to where the NSC shares an exit with the Freya. So at that point, you'd decide. So we'd be adding those lanes in, in these three quadrants, and then also providing the IJR version. Let me get to the next slide, which shows a little more detail. With the reduced footprint, the predominance of the connection I-90 is limited between Altamont and Havana. So a lot less intrusive as far as the, what you saw with that AGR that spread out over three-plus miles and seventeen bridges. This takes it down to quite a few less bridges. I think the num, I don't know that we have the exact number with the braided ramp back in, is you're looking at about eight bridges total. So we went through the same process with looking at this. So implementing the IJR solution in the northwest quadrant, like I described, adding the add-drop lanes, this one at a highway capacity manual analysis functions well for operations and safety. We have not run through the microsimulation. That works underway, that reproduced the heat maps and the traffic flows. But we wanted to get this information out as we move forward and start the discussions. The trade-offs for this one that we've identified are the reduced footprint, you know, it's a reduced impact, it's around the neighborhood, it's not as much as a monstrosity and be able to make those connections in a tighter space than what the spread-out versions. This one also consolidates that westbound off-ramp to Second, as I described, so pretty much it doesn't change from either of the two top options. But this one does. We did include the on-ramp from Second Avenue. So the alt-eight version, we don't have that in there. The budget wouldn't allow for that added ramp. So we've looked at the smaller footprint, providing a little bit of room in the budget and the demand for that Second Avenue, saying that this makes sense to go ahead and include. So we want to make sure our modeling reflects that. But what this does do, it removes the on-ramp from Third Avenue east of Altamont. So this one here, you would actually lose the connection directly from Altamont, and that traffic would stay on Third Avenue and get on at the Freya on-ramp further east. So this would route that traffic through Thor and Freya intersections before they could get on. And again, we have the same homework.
Councilmember Caskard has a question for you.
Yeah. So are we, or you, is Wash Dot trying to decide between these two options? Are there, or would they, could they work together? I guess that's where I'm a little confused. Or are there other options that they're still hanging out there that you're looking at?
Like I mentioned, we have two leading options, but that doesn't mean we're done looking for options. And there may be some other combination that would allow that. We are, we, you know, proofed out this simple trumpet enough to know it wouldn't function on its own, and had to take portion of the IJR and add that in to allow that to function properly.
But are we saying that you're trying to decide between implementing the alt-eight or the trumpet hybrid? Or is it something where they would be working together? And then something that they would, that where both would get implemented into the design?
We're providing what the analysis and modeling shows us to date. We have not made a decision, but there could be a combination that could go forward. Again, what we see as the leading two options are these. And again, through their conversations and public presses, we may go back and let the plugging in another piece of the puzzle.
Okay. So not necessarily deciding between the two, but they might both, or portions of both could be implemented. So my other question then, just to follow up, so you referenced an on-ramp to the NSC from Second Avenue, and that would be somewhere, I can't remember now, but somewhere in the East Central neighborhood then for access to the NSC?
Yeah. So where it fit, you know, due to geometric constraints, is actually west of Thor Freya, and it would come on immediately west of there. I think I have.
And what about an off-ramp?
Off-ramp.
Into the East Central from the NSC? Is that, is that in the design?
Yeah. So right now, the off-ramp southbound actually splits onto Second Avenue, and they can access via Altamont. So that's, that's to get, you know, from the NSC to the neighborhood. That's the correct sense.
And have you presented this to the East Central Neighborhood or ESBA? And I'm just curious what the feedback has been from them.
So I've reached out to them. I've yet to get on their agenda. Again, we wanted to get the information far enough along. They expressed appreciation for my offer, but I have not coordinated to where we can put this one directly in front of them. We did meet with them, I do believe, in 2020 was the last time when we let them know, you know, where we're at and where we're going. So this is the Second Avenue on-ramp I discussed, so Thor Freya intersections, it would come on directly after that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kinnear and then Councilmember Mumm.
Thank you. I'm wondering if there's been any modeling or traffic studies on the arterials further up the hill? So for somebody, say, to get from Twenty-Ninth to the freeway, what route would they take? Would that route be changed based on which modeling you use? And if so, have traffic studies been done to find out what the impact there would be?
So we have a pretty extensive footprint of what we look at for modeling. I don't know specifically how far south that went, but we had to follow the corridor and essentially look at, you know, intersections within a mile of the corridor as we look at it. And as we get to I-90, the answer for access would be coming down the hill, either getting Thor Freya or Altamont, and being able to get through the intersection and get on with this version at Second Avenue, that would allow them to get on north. And again, currently, this ramp is not part of the IJR alt-eight version. It's simply been determined it's feasible and will be, would be all used, but it's not within the scope of that project or that option.
Councilmember Mumm.
Hi there. Thank you for the presentation. Do any of these plans anticipate, or did they model the use of HOV/ transit lanes? And if not, what will it take for our community to get to that level where it triggers those?
Yeah. So the original NSC considered light rail or HOV or things along those lines. And as it worked towards refinement, we actually worked with STA, and the answer is high-capacity transit. Can't remember the terminology, but it's a high-speed network that they would employ rather than have a dedicated lane. So anyway, we provided on the north end room for future park-and-ride type applications in coordination with the STA. I don't know that it's moved beyond that. I know that we still have that area reserved for it. But again, the answer for getting up and down the corridor was the high-capacity transit network.
And I guess this, just as a follow-up, is just a general, what does it take for a community to get to HOV, you know, for I-90? STA is taking a look at a pilot project that would take us over into Idaho to get some relief there.
Yeah. It's something that I probably don't have the best answer for. I don't know if Mike Grimley would want to take that one.
So good morning, council. I'm sorry I missed the opportunity earlier to jump on the screen and say good morning. It is a great question. I think we have some interest in contemplating that. There's several things that are bouncing around in this conversation right now that don't have direction. I'm assuming that the council is familiar with what Idaho is planning on the other side of the border, which is they're contemplating expansion of I-90. And they are beginning to ask lots of questions of us in the Spokane area about whether we're going to participate in the expansion. I've been very reluctant at this point to be, you know, essentially not accepting that as an alternative at this point. And I think where we're going to lean in this conversation is likely into efficiency, which is, I think, where you're kind of going here. So there's a lot of conversation coming on this. I can't give you clarity on it yet, but I can tell you where we are leaning is to try and wring the efficiency out of the system and not participate in the expansion bug that's coming from Idaho. But there will be significant pressure applied to our agency to do so. That is already starting to ramp up.
Thank you.
Were there other questions?
Just, yeah, just one more for me, just maybe more clarifying. So if I'm understanding correctly, if you are south of I-90, your only option to get, or for the most part, your only option to get onto the NSC would be to travel to the north side of I-90 and access a northbound ramp? Is that, is that correct?
Right. And in the alternate eight or the IJR version, this ramp wouldn't be here. So your next availability would actually be north up to Trent Avenue, so go up Freya to Trent, and then over to a half interchange, where you could get on northbound from Trent, and you can also get off southbound to Trent.
Well, I would, I would just say, I mean, I don't, at least the current makeup of my district isn't south of I-90, but I would have some pretty strong concerns about the congestion that would be created by forcing all of that traffic to north of I-90, and then potentially even all the way up further to Trent. I think that's going to just be a terrible boondoggle if that's what happens. So I think if there's any exploration that can be done for a northbound access south of I-90, I think it needs to be looked at just to keep traffic congestion at a minimum, is my guess. But I just think East Central needs to have easy access to I-90, or to the NSC, and I just would be very hesitant to see traffic get forced north of I-90 for all that congestion to get put in there. So anyway, those are my big concerns. I'm happy to follow up and provide more details in your four questions there.
Okay. Appreciate that. And I know there's quite a history. That question has come up over the years, and obviously NSC's been around for a long time. And I know it's been looked at in various different aspects for connections further south, and the answer seems to be the impacts aren't worth the benefit from that. Now, Mike, you want to chime in on that?
Well, I want to recognize a conversation that took place many years ago around this. When the agency was initially looking at how this footprint would land on the I-90 connection, we were entertaining a southerly connection. There was a significant amount of resistance to that option from the public at the time. And so we looked at it, dealt with the resistance, and it actually ended up abandoning it at the time. It is difficult and intrusive to build a connection, and that was really what was kind of coming out of the discussion. Now, that's quite a few years ago, council. And so, I mean, that's a historical perspective, but I do want you to be aware of that, that this was something we had considered early on, recognizing there might be some interest from the South Hill to have that connection. And at the time at least, was met with a lot of disagreement.
Just a quick comment here, Betsy. So I have to concur with Councilwoman McCattcart, forcing all that traffic on Trent with the railroad tracks there would be a little like, how would that work? But my other question is, at what point, or what's your timeline to start community engagement again around these new plans? Because there's lots of curiosity as to where we're going with this. People keep asking. They know there are options, but they don't know what they are at this current time. And give us an updated timeline on the windows you're looking at.
So this project is slated to go to construction in 2023, October of 2023, so about two years out from now. This is one of the first steps in re-engagement community. We're meeting with the NSC executives and advisory committees, so some people that are part of that will see this presentation twice, and we see portions. And again, I've reached out to East Central to provide this information, and we've been meeting with the other neighborhood councils, giving them updates. In the last month, I've had five different meetings with neighborhood councils. East Central's the only one within the I-90 or the NSC footprint that I haven't been able to get the stars aligned to get on that agenda. But we are moving forward. COVID actually prevented us from meeting in person, and it makes it a little more difficult to have those good two-way conversations. And we're hoping we'd be able to get to meeting in person again, but we found that we can effectively get the word out and get those communications virtually. It's just not as personal a touch as we'd like to do. I know you guys have a 12:30 hard stop, so I've got one more information I'd like to share.
Councilmember Kinnear has a thing, and we do have to go fast because we have another major presentation, but.
I'll be real quick. I remember when the homes were removed and we started looking at NSC and how it was going to connect to I-90, and that was years ago. And I'm wondering, is this a normal timeline for a freeway project? If this is not, you know, I-5, the I-5 corridor? So I'm wondering why this is going so, from my perception, so slowly?
So I'll take that. Oh, Bob, can I take that?
Go ahead.
So a project like this can only progress as fast as the funding will allow, and that's the bottom line. Everything that has been designed into the timeline is based on when we can access funding. One of the things that, you know, in the most recent discussion we've discussed is the ability, you know, there's clearly some opportunity to accelerate the completion time, but that requires re-aging a significant amount of money. We have proposed that, propose is probably a strong word. We've made that information known, that that opportunity exists, and that has not happened. And so that's, this entire NSC project has been driven by the different funding events that have taken place, when money was available and what it would produce. So that is really what drives this entire conversation. So, that is really what drives this entire conversation, really. You know, I mean, we can get down to talking about delivery of environmental documents and that kind of thing. But in the larger scale of this discussion, we've had, you know, between nickel TPA and connecting Washington, we were shut down for several years, couldn't progress on anything. We didn't have any access to funds. So, that's the simple answer. It's driven by funding.
President, I've got another question.
All right, go ahead.
Be really quick because this would be for another meeting in Councilmember Stratton. Maybe we can put it on our urban, our urban experience agenda for next, for our next meeting. But I think, right now, Altamont location is closed to get the on-ramp. I'm wondering if we can update on that and then also an update on the Trent Bridge. Obviously, not for now, but maybe for another meeting. I just wanted to bring it up and I've been getting some emails about both of those.
They're both hot topics, and I think it would be great. We would appreciate the opportunity to come talk with you about that.
All right, bring us on, Bob.
Okay. So, this last construction season, we had a period of time where the Freya on-ramp was closed. And that provided us some time to look at what that closure did as far as traffic impacts or not. And so, when it was closed, we found that that 4.7-mile congestion that happened in the evenings, that, you know, sometime lasted up to two hours before it cleared out, didn't exist. And what we found is the average speed during that time, so this is 39 miles an hour, is what we were experiencing. Now, think back to those heat maps. If we don't build the NSC and connect I-90, those numbers are going to drop down to zero to 20 in this section. And what we saw during that one ramp being closed for three months is the average speeds were really close to the posted speed limit. So, it was free-flow conditions. And so, that told us quite a few different things. That where Freya comes on, the Freya on-ramp from Third Avenue comes on I-90, I-90's going to dip. And so, there's a little bit of concern with the I-90 drivers as people are merging. The visibility's not that great. And so, in our designs, we pushed that NSC connection to where it ties into its own lane. So, it doesn't have that rub. And then, we moved the Freya on-ramp further down to allow it to connect at a, not in close proximity to another on-ramp. So, we removed the potential friction. So, again, with the showing that it, connection to I-90 actually improves I-90 with the NSC connected. This is kind of what we're gauging on as well. And we don't want to not look at this data when we have the opportunity. So, the other piece of that is we looked at safety performance modeling and what the predicted, you know, crash rate would be. By eliminating that friction at that on-ramp location, there would be a reduction of two crashes per year. That would be an I-90 mainline crash. Those are typically high-speed, you know, potentially injury-type accidents. But the trade-off would be if you did not add a ramp back in further east and you left it as they were going through Havana and forth and then back on Custer, there would be an increase of crashes on the local system. We put out a survey, our Traffic Division did, just to get the public to weigh in on, you know, what they thought about reopening that before we did. And before we did that, we had 55% were actually in favor of keeping that closed. And then, once the construction was completed, we reopened that ramp because there really was no nexus for us to keep it closed. And the input since then, they've actually had more in favor of closing that ramp. So, again, our designs with the NSC connection are separate from that construction. But we've learned from what that showed us. And we have the ability to correct what I see as a deficiency of where the location that our connection is and still allow for the Freya connection to work. What we're looking at now is actually combining Custer and Freya into each other before they come on, about where the vicinity of Custer is. Still working through some details, but that's what we're finding. And so, in summary, again, there's two leading options. That doesn't mean that aren't the only options. And we're working to move forward with the public to help identify which one or one versions to move forward. Anyway, that's all I have. Other than the next steps are to complete the modeling and do that. Next steps in the public engagement, work through that.
Well, thank you so much, Bob and Mike and team for this. As you can see, we're very interested in it. And it was very helpful to have you slow it down for us and so that we could really understand it. Have a much better understanding than the article in the newspaper now. So, thank you for that. Councilmember Stratton?
Just a quick question. I am happy to put this on Urban Experience for next month. And Bob, we can give you a call to see how much time you're going to need. And just to make sure I've got this right, so it's going to be an update on the Trent Bridge and the Altamont ramp, the on-ramp by Altamont, is that correct?
I can coordinate that. It's actually going to be different players involved, but we can get it to the right people.
Great.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody. Let's move to comprehensive plan. And although I said we have a hard stop at 12:30, it's important for us to see it. So, will this be late to the health board, or at least I will be? So, Kevin Freebaugh, I think you're the lead on this. Take it away.
I bet it helps if I put my microphone down. So, let me, let me share my screen very quickly. And I'll run through these as quick as I can to give you enough time to ask questions and things. So, just give me, bear with me one second. All right, so, thank you, everybody. I appreciate your time. I know time's short today, so I'm going to go rather quickly. Feel free to stop me with questions. But I am bringing to you today the suite of six applications that we have been processing for the last year or a little more than a year for comprehensive plan amendments. Very quickly, just a reminder, I know you guys know this, you've heard this from me before, but these have gone through a lengthy process. Usually takes 12 months to get to this point, and that's pretty much where we're at. We are, we've gotten through the Agency Comment Period, Public Comment Period, multiple workshops with Plan Commission. And Plan Commission last night completed their hearing process. So, now I'm bringing these to you for your hearing process and consideration. We have six applications this year. Five of them are changes to the land use plan map, which you can see on this summary map on the right. And the last one is another round of minor amendments to the bike map in Chapter Four. So, the first one, this 194 is the application number, is a single parcel. This is the McKinley School parcel. I'm sure you're, you're all fairly familiar with this. Just north of Sprague, the applicant is, it's currently designated for light industrial. The applicant would like to make it a part of the East Central Center that runs along Sprague there. So, it would be a CC Core land use. And the resulting zoning would be Centers and Corridors Type One Employment Center. Because that's actually, even though it's a linear center, it's a center, not a corridor. So, that's the first one. We had hearings, all of them had hearings on October 13th and the 27th. So, that's going to be the same for all of them. And on this one, Plan Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. The, the next one is 206. This one's on Cleveland Avenue.
Kevin, can you give just a thumbnail of what that would open up as far as uses and why the applicant's interested in it?
Absolutely. So, the applicant is hoping to do redevelopment of the site, not to destroy the historic school. It's more about the remainder of that site because it is one large parcel. And they want to include a residential component. With a light industrial, they can't do that. And so, by folding it into the center, they're allowed to do mixed-use and residential. And then, Type One is the more pedestrian-oriented center. So, that gives him an opportunity, the developer, an opportunity to do a pedestrian-oriented, mixed-use kind of thing while still retaining that historic building.
Perfect, thanks. Oh, Councilmember Mum?
Yes, and I just want to caution us as we often want to, as curious individuals, know who the applicant is and what they're proposing. I think sometimes it's important not to get to that level of detail. So, we're not making project-by-project decisions. We're making lifetime decisions on the future use and what potentially could happen. So, I'm just, not that that wasn't a bad question, but just we've tried to do that. The Plan Commission level too is take the details of the project out of it.
Yeah, absolutely. We tend to say in, in planning, the applicant's stated intent, which is as vague as we can be. And so, you know, without any kind of development proposal, I can't be sure exactly what will go into any one of these projects. Thank you, councilman.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to know what the potential possibilities, and you answered that, so thank you.
Great. Let's see, the next one, 206. This one is on Cleveland. It's just east of Division, which you can't quite see in this aerial photo. This one had a lot of, a lot of work done by Plan Commission. They looked at different alternatives, different expansions, different zoning. But ultimately, what we ended up with is there's a single parcel here on the west side. That's the original applicant here. And then, Plan Commission ultimately voted to include the 14 parcels to the east of it. So, that's why you see two areas here and a little asterisk. It's a total of just under four acres. And really, what this is, is this is a little bit of single-family that's at the bottom of the bluff there, just next to Cleveland. And the proposal is to go from a single-family land use designation or residential 4 to 10, which is our least dense, to residential 1530, which is our middle-range residential density. So, the zoning would go from single-family residential to residential multifamily as well. And so, that was, again, that went back and forth. So, you will see in the staff report that we looked at a larger area. We did look at a higher zoning, but this is where it ended up with Plan Commission's recommendation. We did receive quite a bit of public comment on this, both in support and against the proposal. Again, two hearings with Plan Commission to complete the process. And ultimately, Plan Commission voted to include the expanded area to the east and recommended approval. And that was a six to two vote. Ooh, I see questions.
Councilmember Capcart and then Kinnear.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'm just wondering, are you able to share why the two votes against or what the concerns were?
The discussion at the deliberation level was more about whether it conformed with the location criteria in the comprehensive plan, talking about where multifamily should be and also the intensity of the change. The Plan Commission was, like I said, it was larger at one time. They looked at a higher zoning. And they were concerned that that was too significant of a change necessarily for what is just the annual amendment process.
Okay, thank you.
And just as a side note, we'll make sure to include findings with the packet that comes to you soon, as well as the staff reports.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Thanks, Kevin. As always, good job. Could you talk a little bit, because we talked about this, that Plan Commission, the fact that it's proximity to Ruby/Division, but also, and this was my question. I asked, Cleveland is not an arterial in the front, but it feeds into an arterial. And my question was about the impact on traffic with all of a sudden this increased density on a residential street. So, could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So, Cleveland is a local street, as are these north-south streets you see running from kind of this area. I believe that's Aster on the right. But Foothills is an arterial. It leads eastward to the Foothills Employment Center. Division, obviously, is a, is a major arterial as well. One of the things that you'll see in the staff report is that when Plan Commission was, was working with a higher zoning in a larger area, we did make sure with the, with INGA and Integrated Capital Management and Traffic to make sure that they would not be concerned by that increase. And they did not have any concerns at that time. So, obviously, that would be looked at again when we get to a development level, like when an actual development application came in. But on its face, an increase in zoning was not a concern traffic-wise. Great. Any other questions on 206 before I scooch to the next one? No? Great. All right, so the next one is 207. This one's on North Monroe, within the area that the North Monroe rightsizing and all the streetscape work was completed. It's just behind a property on North Monroe. But all of these that you see with this kind of hash mark are all in common ownership. So, it's a single parcel of 0.16 acres. It currently contains a house that is actually functioning as a multifamily unit. It has, I think, three residences within it, but it was built as a single-family home. We have a lot of those in Emerson-Garfield with, it looks like a house, but it's really a multifamily use. So, it's a single parcel that the owner owns all of this east half of this block. And really, what they're seeking to do is to match the zoning and land use for their part, for all their properties. So, what we have is currently it's residential 4 to 10, and they're seeking to go to general commercial, which matches the other ones that they own. And the zoning is a residential single-family, and they'd like it to match the center, the corridor use, I'm sorry, the corridor zoning along Monroe, which is Centers and Corridors Type Two District Center. So, we did receive a couple of comments against this one. They were mostly concerning the other properties owned by the individual, not the property under, under the proposal. So, they're, they related to, you know, maintenance and operation and use of a property that is not a part of this application. And so, but they did provide those, that testimony in those letters. Plan Commission, again, two hearings. And they did ultimately vote to recommend approval unanimously for this one. So, are there any questions on this one before I skip? Not seeing any, great. 208 is the next one. Now, we're on, we're still on North Monroe, but we're further south. So, you can see here, this is Monroe and Maxwell. And just a note, we have two that are adjacent to each other. That's the community school to the north here. That's the next one I'll be speaking to. So, the one that, or 208, the one that concerns, is a private application for two parcels here on the corner of Sinto and Madison. At docketing, you might remember, we extended that to include all the other parcels in this block that are in the same zoning. And you'll see that in just a minute. So, ultimately, it's 1.3 acres. This is a combined private and city application. So, the original application was only for half an acre. It's been expanded. And essentially, what's going on here is we have a land use designation of residential 10 to 20, which is our duplex level of density. And the proposal would be to bring it into residential 15-plus, which matches the multifamily density you see on the other side of the Monroe corridor. So, just provide a greater residential density. Zoning would go from residential two-family up to residential high-density with a 55-foot height limit. Typically, RHD is 35 feet. This proposal is to, is to let it go to 55 feet, again, matching that higher density that's on the other side of the corridor. So, this one, two hearings as well. Plan Commission voted to include the expanded area. They like that. And then, they also recommended approval based on the, based on the expanded area as well. So, that was a unanimous decision.
Councilmember Capcart?
Yeah, Kevin, I'm wondering, so it looks like the land around it, or at least to the east, is CC2. Was that considered to just bring this into the same, that same zoning?
It's always an option. However, it's, it wasn't a part of the discussion at the Plan Commission level. The applicant asked for RHD because their intent for those southwest two parcels were multifamily. Their stated intent is to build multifamily eventually there. And so, it wasn't really an aspect of the discussion. Generally, what you see along the Monroe corridor when we applied that CC2 zoning, it goes, it's usually one property's width deep. And then, you know, ultimately, the comp plan would want to see some kind of transition then, from there on for like multifamily or maybe office, and then it stepped down. It's not typically the whole block, except in special situations like the school to the north where it's one parcel.
Well, and that's where I was wondering, just because we are extending it there, would it make sense to do the same below? But nope, I understand. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Okay, so, 209, this is the last of the land use map changes. 209 represents the single parcel that contains the community school. This is a District 81 property. They, it's a single parcel of just under two acres. There's been a school there since the 1890s. So, it's, it's pretty stable as far as what its use has been over time. But really, what there's, what the school intends to do is ultimately to redevelop the school as a school, just to update the facility. The facility that's there now, I believe, was built in the 60s or the 80s. Anyways, it's not, it's not ideal for what the community school offers and for what their future planning is. So, they're, they're currently residential 10 to 20, which is, again, that kind of duplex level density. And what they're doing is they would like to be, they know they're on the Monroe corridor. This front's right on Monroe. And so, they would like to go straight to the center. this front's right on Monroe, and so they would like to go straight to Centers and Corridors Core to allow them to, if they do to redevelop, to redevelop to that kind of more center-type, you know, front-loaded on Monroe, more pedestrian-oriented kind of development that you get in the Core. So the zoning is currently RTS, that's 2-family. So they would, their proposal was to match what is also already in place along Monroe, which is the CC 2 District Centers, Type 2 District Center. However, during the, well, I'll get to it here in a second, the ultimate recommendation was a little different. So the Plan Commission had hearings on the 13th and 27th. There was discussion at the workshops and staff made a recommendation that perhaps this was better applied as a CC Type 1, which is the more pedestrian-oriented. So you can't have gas stations, you can't have drive-throughs, that kind of thing. And ultimately, Plan Commission agreed, they think that, that this is better as a CC Type 1. So their recommendation is to amend the zoning to CC 1. The applicant is fine with that, that they didn't have any concerns. And then they recommended approval based on that unanimously. So, okay, almost there. Sorry, I go as fast as I can here. The last one, 022, this is, just like last year, we had some changes to the bike map. That garnered a lot of interest, that garnered a lot of activity. Colin Quinnhurst in our office has been working very hard with neighborhoods and other groups, the Bicycle Advisory Board. And there was just another series of cleanup and amendments to that map this year. So that's what this is. Ultimately, you'll get detailed maps in your packet of what each one of these looks like. I'm just giving you a quick overview map. The green ones, you know, there's a lot of neighborhood greenway correction, some of them are corrections, some of them are new, little bike lane changes here and there, and then some, some new features like a possible bike lane downtown where development has happened a little differently than originally anticipated. So these various changes have been discussed and vetted multiple ways, not just in this process, but as I said, Mr. Quinnhurst has gone to the Bicycle Advisory Board and spoken to some neighborhoods about it. So very similar to last year. Two hearings, not, no testimony on this one, no letters from the neighborhood. Some, some discussions at the agency level about design details that come later, that we will be able to work out as these implement. This is just a map change for a future condition. And ultimately, Plan Commission voted to recommend approval of this, and they voted And that is all six of them. So I know you're disappointed that I didn't bring in nine like last year, but that's all six.
Excellent job on getting this done so quickly, too. I appreciate it. And we'll, when is this going to come to us?
As soon as possible. I should have the findings, Plan Commission just voted last night, so it'll take a little bit to get findings signed. And I'll, obviously, I'll be working with Councilmember Kinnear, she's the sponsor, just to make sure the timing is okay. But we would really like to get this before you, before the end of November. I don't want to be piling on your budget season and everything else, and it's, I know it's very difficult. So we're almost ready to go. I could, I should be able to drop it next week into OnBasis, everyone's okay with that.
All right, yeah. Well, I didn't hear any concerns, so that's great. Keep it coming.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thanks for your work for this last year on it. All right, so we're a little over time. I'm just going to mention budget and ARP. On budget, we're going to get the administration's budget next week. I think I circulated a memo of comments, that they were just my comments to people, but, so people have seen that. And if you have any further comments to the administration, they would love to hear it, but they're working feverishly to take all the input at those hearings that we had with them. So, and then we'll, you know, we've got six weeks to make the budget, since Council has the final word on that, make the budget, negotiate with the administration, do that. So wanted to mention that. On ARPA, unfortunately, we don't really have much, we don't have time to have a discussion on that today, but the ARP work group came up with eight, eight ideas for what I call early outs. It's not like the eight top ones, it's just the early outs ones. And we hope to have one-pagers for you on those within the next week, so hopefully we can talk about it next week. We've shared them with the administration for their early feedback as well. But, so we'll get that to you. And then also, just a reminder, you all have gotten the spreadsheet with the ideas that have come to us. And, and some of, people have said, well, wait a second, I didn't see this idea on it. And so that's why we wanted to send it to you. So if there are ideas that aren't on the spreadsheet that you think should be there, make sure that you email McKenzie about that, and she'll get it on there. And then secondly, if there's an idea that, not just that you're favorable about, but like, no, this is like one of my top ones and I want to be a sponsor on it, let McKenzie know that. Councilmember Capcart has about six or seven in there, and you can see in the notes section on the spreadsheet if anyone has that. But if you have something that you are really passionate about, we want to know that. And then we are, we've committed to bringing anything forward that anyone's passionate about, but what we're working on is making sure that it's an eligible use of funds. And then secondly, timing on it. So that's what the work group is trying to, you know, put things together that are related and make sense of timing. We've been focusing right now on things that would have a direct, immediate community impact for early outs as opposed to replenishment of revenues. So just wanted to throw that out. We'll continue that discussion. And then three of us have the joy of the health district meeting, so I'll see the other two of you there. Have a great week, everyone, and we'll see you on Monday.